Having reached the date and hour designated in the warrant for the October 20th, 2025, special town meeting, I hereby call the meeting to order. My name is Amy Kular and I am the Bourne Town Meeting Moderator. Mr. Town Clerk Barry Johnson, how many voters have been checked into the town meeting? One hundred and ninety-one. I declare there is a quorum present. Mr. Town Clerk, has the special town meeting warrant been duly posted as required by law? He responds in the affirmative. Everyone, please silence your cell phones, and at this time, I'm going to ask you to join me in standing so that we can recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing until I ask you to be seated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us now offer a special moment of silence to those brave men and women who serve our nation in the public safety, military and intelligence services at home and abroad, and for those town employees who have passed away since the last town meeting. Thank you. You may now be seated. All right. So what's going to happen now is I'm going to provide this town meeting with a lot of information over the next few minutes. We are going to go over some housekeeping matters and use our voices to vote on two motions that move the town meeting business along smoothly. We are also going to do a quick mock vote on how to use the electronic voting devices. When I ask for motions during the next few minutes, we are going to conduct those votes by voice. These are routine and in keeping with long-time practice in the town of Bourne. I thank you all for joining us here tonight. There's first-time attendees. If this is your first meeting or your 50th meeting, you are welcome here tonight, and thank you for joining us. Seated on the stage in front of you on my right, the Finance Committee is behind the town clerk and the Assistant Town Clerk. The gentleman who provides electronic voting is directly behind me. Town Council and Select Board are on my left. Does everyone have a voter handbook? Okay, great. If you don't have one, please raise your hand and a teller will bring you one. Does every registered voter have an electronic voting device? If you do not have an electronic voting device, please raise your hand and a teller will come to you and get you a voting device. All right, so now we are going to take a moment to go over how the electronic voting system works. So when you checked in, you were given a handset. That handset is for voting and it is issued to you and only you. Using a handset issued to someone else is strictly forbidden. Before each vote, I will announce what the vote tally that is needed to decide the motion. I will then announce the beginning of a 30-second interval in which you will vote via your handset. To vote yes, you press the green button. To vote no, you press the red button. If you accidentally pressed the wrong button, you can switch your vote by pressing the correct button. You don't want to participate in a vote, don't push any buttons. When the 30-second voting interval is over, I will announce that voting is complete, and shortly thereafter, I will announce the results of the vote. If you have to temporarily leave the auditorium, please leave your handset with the exit desk staff at the rear. They will label your handset with your name and reissue it when you return to the auditorium. When leaving the auditorium at the conclusion of business, please make sure to place your handset in one of the bins at the exit desk. Now, we are going to do a practice vote to make sure that everyone here is comfortable with operating their handset. Remember, green for yes, red for no. All right, the first question for this town meeting tonight is, will the Patriots make the playoffs this season? Green for yes, red for no. It is now closed. I declare the Patriots will make the playoffs with a vote of 147 to 36. All right. I am informed by the Board of, the Select Board, that if this town meeting does not conclude this evening, it is their intention to move that at recess and reconvene here tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. This town meeting is governed by Robert's Rules of Order as interpreted by the book Town Meeting Time. I'm going to spare all of you my reading of the moderator's rules, which are detailed beginning on page seven in your voter handbook. I will address parliamentary matters as they arise during the course of the meeting. When an article is called and you would like to speak on that article, please leave your seat and come down to the front and sit near one of the two microphones so that I may recognize you. You will have up to three and a half minutes to speak. I will be keeping time. If at any time during the debate of the articles, I determine that there are numerous individuals wishing to speak to the article on the floor, I may reduce the time allotted to each speaker. One thing that will not be tolerated this evening are personal attacks or other similar behavior from a speaker. You will be declared out of order and in accordance with Massachusetts law, you may be removed from the meeting by the Sergeant-at-Arms and confined until the conclusion of the session. Please remember, if you're speaking, please to speak only to the motion on the floor. Do not be repetitive. Be concise and to the point. This meeting is being recorded for later televising on the local cable channel. I have a stenographer down front keeping an official written transcript of the proceedings. And, as a matter of long-time custom and usage within the town of Bourne, it is solely within the moderator's discretion to allow non-voters to address the town meeting. If anything interferes with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in the town meeting to your satisfaction, you may interrupt the meeting by declaring a point of personal privilege, and your concern will be heard and addressed. If you need to speak from your seat, please get my attention and we will send you a portable microphone. Okay. We are now going to conduct two votes by voice. I will now entertain a motion that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and of the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read resolutions or warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them instead by article number and/or page in the handbook. I have a, I have a motion in a second? Any discussion? No? So all those in favor of allowing me to dispense with the reading of the warrant, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say nay. I declare it is unanimous. I declare that motion passes. I am informed by the Board of, the Select Board, that there is a Bourne Rule Resolution. This resolution is printed on page 48 of your handbook. Madam Chair of the Select Board, I will entertain your motion to adopt the Bourne Rule Resolution as printed in the handbook. I have a motion in a second. All right. All those in favor of adopting the Bourne Rule as printed on page 48 of your handbook, please say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, I declare it is unanimous. I declare the motion passes. All right. I am informed by the Town Administrator in accordance with Section 1.1.9 of the Town Bylaws, that there are articles which the Select Board and the Finance Committee have each voted are essential to the exercise of the town's corporate functions. These articles are two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. All other articles of this special town meeting will be drawn by lottery. At this time, I'm going to ask you to proceed to Article Two, which is the first article tonight, on page 12 of your handbook. Okay. Article Two on page 12 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town vote to amend the action taken under Article Two, Fiscal 2026 Budget of the 2025 Annual Town Meeting by one, approving monies in the total amount of $100,000 as specified in the chart entitled Funding Sources below, and two, by increasing expenses by 100,000 as specified in the chart entitled These Amounts Are To Be Voted below. Funding sources, ambulance fund, 100,000. Total funding sources, 100,000. These are to be vote, I'll just go through, sorry. General government increase, 68,524. Public safety increase of 207,376. Culture and recreation increase of 12,731. Shared costs less decreased by 188,631. Total amounts to be voted equals 100,000.
Ms. Ferretti, you have the floor.
Article Two makes a number of changes to the current fiscal year operating budget. An additional 100,000 will be transferred from the ambulance reserve fund to offset the personnel costs with the fire department. The article also funds salary adjustments, sorry, for the Bourne Employee Association Group and funds the settlement contract with the local 171 of the IAFF. Money has been added to the budget to upgrade the vacant facility manager position to a facilities director and create a new administrative assistant in the DPW to assist with facilities and sewer-related clerical tasks. Money is being added to the library budget to make a part-time position that is currently vacant a full-time position when a new person is hired. Finally, both the police and fire department budgets for overtime will be increased so that both departments have approximately 13% of the budgeted wages available for overtime payments.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jim Sullivan.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Two? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article Two. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 193 votes in favor and 11 opposed. The next article, Article Four, is on page 14 of your voter handbook. Article Four on page 14 of your handbook requires a two-thirds majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Gina Saravitz.
Before I read the motion, I just want to alert you to three changes that are in the motion due to the successful grant application for federal funds which are necessary for compliance. The chart below remains unchanged. We move that the town appropriate 1,774,500 to pay the costs of capital outlay projects listed in the schedule printed below. And to meet this appropriation, we move to, one, transfer the sum of 324,000 from free cash, and two, transfer the sum of 475,000 from the ambulance reserve fund. We further move to authorize a town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of 975,500 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 of the general laws as amended and supplemented, or any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town thereafter. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such a premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. You have the floor, Mrs. Saravitz.
Okay, I was going to read the chart.
Go for it.
Fire department, equipment, replace self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA and RIT. 500,500 dollars of borrowing. Fire department, transportation, forestry vehicle, 35,000 dollars from free cash. Fire department, infrastructure, vehicle exhaust system, retrofit fire stations one and two and three, sorry, 114,000 dollars from free cash. Fire department, transportation, ambulance, 475,000 dollars from the ambulance reserve fund. Engineering, infrastructure, ongoing testing and monitoring of soil cleanup at community building, 95,000 dollars from free cash. Natural resources, transportation, animal control vehicle, 80,000 dollars from free cash. And lastly, school department, under the contracting authority of the school committee, infrastructure, middle school wastewater treatment plant, 475,000 dollars of borrowing.
Thank you.
Approving this article will fund the capital projects recommended by the Capital Outlay Committee. The money allocated for the fire department's forestry vehicle and SCBA projects are the local share required to take advantage of the two federal AFG grants that the department successfully applied for. The town will receive 295,454.54 in federal funds for the forestry vehicle and 505,645.45 in federal funds for the replacement of the SCBA. The wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant project for the Bourne Public Schools in the above article will replace the previous request of 2.1 million that was approved at the May 6, 2024 town meeting, Article 5-2. The previously approved borrowing authority will be rescinded at the upcoming May 2026 annual town meeting.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do. The Finance Committee voted unanimously five, zero, one to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Four? I recognize you, Mr. Mealy.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. The 475,000 dollar investment into the school's wastewater treatment plant repairs, it was mentioned within the town's previous comprehensive wastewater management plan that that plant might be utilized for soaring in neighboring communities. Would this investment allow that to be taking place, or are there other repairs or upgrades that might be necessary in order to fulfill that?
I'm going to ask the Town Administrator to answer.
Marley McCollum, Town Administrator. That is yet to be determined. So the school treatment plant, a wastewater treatment plant, will have to be analyzed as part of the Select Board's watershed permit application for the Finney's Harbor Watershed. So the upgraded, the repairs slated for upgrade tonight won't do anything to harm the future use of the treatment plant. However, in order to expand the plant, possibly in the future, additional costs may be incurred.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Thank you.
I am Leona Bombachi-Bocasset. I just have a question. I'm not clear what the soil problem is at the community building. Why is it need cleanup?
Yep, we're going to hear from the town engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Lyden, Engineering Department. This has been an ongoing problem for us. We acquired the property Phil's Auto back in 2002, built the community building over that area. It's been a brownfield since that time. Right now, it's pretty expensive to do these monitoring occasions, and the soil gas right now is reading a little hot in certain areas, so we have to do further testing over time, and it's a regulation per DEP, so it's something we're required to do, and this will allow us to do testing for the next three to four years.
But you're talking the Veterans Building and Buzzers Bay, the community building? That land's been there for years, you feel? So I don't understand, is there toxic waste in the soil?
No, there's just some residual gasoline from these sites, and that's been the case since we built on it, yeah? We've been monitoring it the whole time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bombachi. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article Four. All right. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 200 in favor and 13 opposed. Article Five is the next article. It is on page 16 of your handbook. All right. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article Five?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town appropriate 2,500,000 dollars for the purpose of demolishing, demolishing the existing roof and installing a new roof at the police station at 35 Armory Road, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Laws C44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
You have the floor, Ms. Ferretti.
The Select Board voted unanimously five, zero, zero to recommend approval. Good evening. Before I speak on this article, I want to first acknowledge our first responders, police, fire, EMS, and all who answer urgent calls for help. In the recent weeks, our community has suffered several serious incidents that have placed additional operational and emotional strain on those who serve us. They deserve facilities that support their work and protect their health, and we take that responsibility seriously. The roof structure for the police station was built from April through July 2019, with shingles installed in June and July of 2019. In February 2024, town staff noticed visible buckling in certain areas of the roof and reported those observations to the Town Administrator. The town then engaged a licensed engineering firm to perform a thorough in-depth analysis of the roof system to determine the cause and recommend appropriate repairs. At the time, at the same time, sorry, the engineering work began, Town Council put the contractor on notice and began preparing for potential construction claim, consistent with the six-year period available after the department occupied the building. After completing their review, the engineering experts determined the asphalt roof is experiencing widespread buckling that could reduce the roof's overall service life. Their report identified numerous construction defects and found the design does not provide adequate ventilation for the, for most roof areas, contributing to the systemic humidity and condensation issues inside the building. Since receiving the report, the Select Board has filed a lawsuit against the general contractor and the architect of record. We intend to pursue recoveries for work that was not installed correctly to help pay for a replacement roof. The Select Board also believes it is in the town's best interest to hire a different qualified contractor to remove and rebuild the roof. We do not recommend continuing, returning this work to the original contractor who failed to perform it correctly. While I cannot say exactly why these failures occurred, it is clear there was a significant lack of oversight by multiple parties. A building committee was appointed for the project, but it was not able to effectively raise or resolve issues that would have protected the town's interests. The Select Board has revised the process for selecting building committee members to prioritize specific skills and expertise, experience, and current building committees are not working much, are working, now working much more closely with town professional staff. We expect the structural and procedural changes will reduce the risk of similar situations in the future. We understand and share the public's frustration about what happened here. Our focus is on finding a durable solution. The engineering findings indicate that patching or partial repairs will not address the underlying defects or ventilation problems and would likely result in repeated costs and continued disruption. Replacing the roof is the responsible course to restore long-term performance and protect our public safety facility. We ask for your support on this article so that the town can proceed with replacing the roof promptly and safely. The Select Board is committed to completing the work responsibly, pursuing recoveries available through legal action and improving oversight going forward. Thank you for your attention and support to our, for our first responders and for our community.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee encourages your support of this article. As discussed this evening, there has been a clear acknowledgement of past mistakes and a commitment to stronger oversight moving forward. The Finance Committee members who serve on the various building committees are also invested in providing aggressive oversight. Let's now break down the two and a half million dollar request. For the roof replacement as-is, it's approximately 1,523,000 dollars, which includes a 10% construction contingency. There's an allowance to consider an unvented metal roof of 363,000 dollars. There's a timeline escalation of 85,000 dollars going through the summer of 2026. Additional contingency planning and possible temporary relocation costs of 229,000 dollars. Roof redesign and construction oversight, 300,000 dollars. The redesign component is critical, as significant flaws have been identified in the current roof structure, and assembling an entirely new system to fit on the existing finished building is a complex task. The Finance Committee voted five in favor, none opposed, and one abstention to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Would anyone like to be heard on this article?
I'm Bill Dougherty from Kalamet. While I understand all of the issues that have been brought up, and I believe it had been very clear how important this is, we've talked about a lawsuit. Has a lawsuit been filed, and more importantly, do we have a date in which this lawsuit would be heard?
Town Council's going to answer?
Yes, a lawsuit has been filed. The case is currently in discovery. I don't have an end date for that litigation. It'll probably take several years, as is typical with litigation.
Okay, then the follow-up question is, we're borrowing 2,300,000, and in that borrowing period, the town is going to be paying interest over several-year period. Taking that into account, is this, is this amount of the article, are we going after the contractor for all of this, or just a portion of it? Or are we taking into consideration going after him for the cost, the carrying cost, for carrying his burden on the town?
So we've sued both the contractor and the architect. We're alleging that it was built wrong and designed wrong, and we're going to go after them for a full recovery of absolutely everything we're paying. I don't think I need to tell town meeting that a roof shouldn't be failing this soon after we build it, and so we expect to be made whole. I can't guarantee results, but we're certainly going to try.
Okay, so it's my understanding that you're going after him for all of our costs, including the interest on this note that we're picking up in order to cover it? Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article?
Hi, my name is Mike Mallard. I'm a resident of Bourne. And before we get too far away from supporting our fine men and women of law enforcement, I just have a few things to note that are simply related to this topic, okay? I'm not opposed to the roof, but what I do strongly support are the men and women under that roof, okay? For too long now, our officers have been working without a contract, yet they're continuing to serve this town with professionalism, integrity, and dedication, while negotiations have stalled them. These men and women are the ones who do respond to our emergencies. They patrol our neighborhoods, they protect our families 24 hours a day and seven days a week. They deserve the same respect in their contract negotiation process that they give to this community every single shift. The facts are clear, okay? It's making it harder and harder for the town to retain experienced officers and recruit qualified candidates at a time when every community is struggling to maintain safe staffing levels, when an officer leaves Bourne for a nearby town that... staffing levels, when an officer leaves Bourne for a nearby town that pays more. The cost of replacing and training a new recruit far exceeds the cost of simply offering a fair wage to the ones we have already invested in and trust in this community. Finalizing this contract for these men and women isn't just about salary, it's about stability, morale, and public safety. It's about ensuring our department can keep its experienced officers here in Bourne instead of losing years of the town's investment in training and trust, okay? I understand budgets are tight, and there are other things that need to be recognized, but I think this is an important one tonight, all right? And I think we can all agree, public safety is not an expense in a community, it's an investment that we all make as taxpayers, all right? The longer this contract remains unsettled, the more we risk losing these officers or more of these officers, which can damage morale and continue to erode public confidence in this community. Tonight, I'd like to close this out by urging the town and the bargaining representatives of this town to please come together for these men and women of this department, okay? And bring this contract to completion for them. Let's show our patrolmen that this town stands behind them, not just in words, but in action.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article Five? Go ahead. One moment, Mr. Mealy, I'm gonna hear from the town administrator first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to agree wholeheartedly with the previous speaker. I would also like to let the town meeting know that I have consistently agreed to significant pay raises for the patrol officers since March, and was prepared to get the additional money into the people's paychecks on the first day of the fiscal year, which was July first, pending the union's vote. I am fully committed to noticeable base salary increases in each year of the contract. For example, an officer who was at step four in FY twenty-five and moves to step five in year one, step six in year two, and step seven in year three of the contract would receive base pay increases of approximately sixteen thousand six hundred dollars over the three-year period. I feel like this will help us with our retention. I have agreed to increasing the detail rate to eighty dollars an hour by the third year of the contract. I have also agreed to shift differential increases for officers who work the evening and night shifts. I have agreed to increasing the annual education incentive payments to fourteen thousand five hundred dollars every year for each officer with an eligible bachelor's degree, and sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars every year for each officer with an eligible master's degree. I completely and wholly respect the Bourne Police Department, and I have bargained in good faith throughout this process, and I will continue to do so until the end, so that we are able to increase the officer's pay in a fiscally sustainable way that is affordable to the taxpayers of the town of Bourne.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barnes, can you approach, oh. Thank you. Now, I agree, and I heard one speaker speak on the contract, and I thought we would hear a response, but I'm gonna ask that all speakers, please keep your comments to the articles that are before the body going forward, and I will, I don't want to interrupt anyone and ask you to stop speaking. Mr. Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. We find ourselves again speaking of the police department's roof. Five years ago, Bourne constructed our seventeen point six million dollar police station. The roof issues appeared within a six-year period, as you've heard this evening, a period which allows the town to address the builders that can be held liable for any construction issues. The town has entered a lawsuit, as we've also heard this evening, with the police station contractors and the architects. The town, you have also heard this evening, is confident that they agree that they'll be able to recoup the costs associated with the project in an eventual settlement of the lawsuit. Tonight's requested two and a half million dollar project will fix the station. It comes after a town conducted a significant amount of investigation in construction and design defects which are impacting the roof of the station. The roof was found to have structural failures, faulty systems, subpar, and not-to-code construction. I would urge the members of this meeting this evening to overwhelmingly support this request tonight to fund the repair and prevent any further damage to our new station. We have continually put off repairs to our infrastructure, including roofs, which only lead to more expensive repairs later. We only need to look at the middle gym school roof at tonight's meeting. Please support this article at this time, and let's get this done.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson, go ahead.
Evening. My name is Wayne Sampson. I'm the chairman of the Capitol Outlay Committee. In preparation for tonight's meeting, the Capitol Outlay Committee has been provided with information as to the extent of the construction deficiencies of the police station roof. In addition, we have been advised that formal legal action has been initiated. In support of this request, the town hired Gale Associates Incorporated, which is a national consulting engineering firm made up of engineers, architects, and planners with specialties that provide evaluation, design, renovation, and restoration services for buildings. It was through their thorough inspection of the roof's internal structure that provided critical supporting data that the original construction did not meet building structural specifications. I would like to quote one paragraph from the Gale Report for you. And just so you all know, the Gale Report is on the town website, it's a sixty-page document, and you'll find it interesting. But I quote from the Gale Report. "In general, the steep-sloped asphalt shingle roofs are experiencing widespread buckling that could reduce the overall service life of the roof assembly. Gale has identified numerous potential contributors to the observed asphalt shingles buckling and has identified numerous construction defects as it relates to the building code, the conformed documents, industry standard, roofing practices, and roof material manufacturer installation recommendations instructions. Such defects include non-building code compliant roof assembly thermal resistance, single-layer insulation, lack of a continuous thermal barrier, lack of a dedicated continuous vapor barrier, lack of providing roof ventilation, lack of a continuous air barrier, particularly at the wall-to-roof transition, water-damaged plywood roof deck, deficient construction of the flue stacks and associated flashing, unsaled antenna wall penetrations." And Gale has also identified that the design does not provide adequate ventilation provisions for the majority of the steep-sloped asphalt shingle roof areas," end quote. It's important to note that our current building inspector was not even an employee of the town during the majority of this project. However, he has provided very important information in understanding how inspections work on large projects, and in this case, where the inspections fail. As in this case, it was the contractors' structural engineers who signed off that the roof had been built to specification when it had not. It is the strong belief of the Capitol Outlay Committee that in view of the fact that litigation could take years to complete, it is in the town's best financial interest to make the repairs now. Any delay will only continue ongoing damage during adverse weather at the least, and the potential for catastrophic damage during a severe weather event at the worst. By doing the construction now, we will not only fix the problem, but we will have accurate financial data to support the town's reimbursement requests during litigation. The Capitol Outlay Committee strongly asks you to vote in favor of this article in order to protect the town's investment in the entire police facility during its future life, on behalf of the Capitol Outlay Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article Five? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article Five. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. You will have thirty seconds to vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with two hundred and three votes in favor and twenty-two opposed. The next article is Article Six, which is on page seventeen of your handbook. Article Six on page seventeen of your handbook requires a two-thirds majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Mary Jane Mistrangelo.
We move that the town of Bourne appropriates the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to pay feasibility study and schematic design costs related to a potential accelerated repair project involving the removal, replacement, and/or refurbishment of the shingled roofs and B U R gymnasium roof at Bourne Middle School located at seventy-seven Waterhouse Road, Bourne, Massachusetts, zero two five three two, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that is otherwise capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town of Bourne has applied for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, an amount to be expended under the direction of the school committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Bourne acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. Any costs the town of Bourne incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Bourne, and that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Bourne and the MSBA. This motion is contingent upon the MSBA's Board of Directors voting to invite the town to participate in the Accelerated Repair Program, ARP.
Yes, Mr. Angelo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This article provides the design funding needed for the town to participate in the Mass. School and Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program for the twenty-five-year-old roof at Bourne Middle School. This roof has had problems for many years, and almost every classroom space on the second floor has evidence of water infiltration. Replacing the roof would extend the school's longevity and protect the building for continued educational use. Due to the estimated three point five million dollar cost for repairing the roof, it is important for the town to participate in this grant program. The roof project has been delayed for several years for two reasons. First, the town waited until the solar panel contract was fulfilled, and the solar panels could be removed with no further financial obligation or a requirement to reinstall the panels on the new roof. Second, the MSBA grant program has specific age requirements on roofs to be eligible for repair, and this roof project just became eligible this year. If MSBA approves the project, the town has historically received between forty-seven and forty-nine percent reimbursement, which is a significant savings to the town. A yes or I vote in favor of the motion would approve the capital borrowing project for the design and feasibility phase, so the town is ready if the MSBA vote is favorable. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the grant application would not move forward at this time. The select board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The finance committee voted unanimously, six in favor, none opposed, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on Article Six?
George Seaver Katamit, could you tell us the age of the current roof and the projected lifetime of the replacement roof?
The school was built in two thousand, so it's a twenty-five-year-old roof, and hopefully the new roof will last at least twenty-five years, but hopefully longer.
Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach, your, this evening's roofing person. As we've heard, this, this is a twenty-five-year-old roof, and within the documents describing the existing roof, we're told that this is a well-documented listed deficiencies resulting in leaks in almost every area of the second floor. Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask you, as I did in the last Capitol request, to support this, and let's fix this roof as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Would anyone else like to be heard? I see you.
Good evening. My name's Langdon Allen from Pecassett. I have no problem supporting this roof as I did the roof for the fire station. My interest, however, is in that we don't make the same mistakes with this roof that we've made before. It's distressing as a taxpayer to hear a second roof that needs replacing. Not that a twenty-five-year-old roof isn't, hasn't lived its, its lifetime. My question specifically is, it seems like there were a number of mistakes with the police station roof that rendered us almost incapable of seeing deficiencies when the roof was being built, maybe even further before that, when it was being designed. When we hire, or when someone hires a roofer for the elementary or for the middle school, do we plan to have an independent engineer or an independence, independent source of some sort to look over the shoulders of the contractor and the architect to make sure that we're doing it the right way, up to industry standards, up to code?
Administrator addressed this, but we are planning on having an owner's project manager and a building committee to oversee, oversee this, this roof project, and, but the town administrator could answer more thoroughly.
Is that, is that the same level of people that were there to oversee the roof on the police station?
Okay. Who's gonna?
So, the original project was under a school building committee, which is a statutory authority of what is set for the, the school buildings, there's, under a school building committee. So, one of the problems that there is with this roof is that when the solar panels were installed, they were not properly sealed, and then the contractor went under. So, getting those things fixed as part of the solar panel issue did create a lot of issues with this roof, and it became difficult to identify what was original and what was from the solar panels, and Jordan Geist, our school.
But again, my, my question is not about the deficiency, it's about who will perform the oversight when we start replacing that middle school roof? If it's a bunch of civilians, with all due respect, we're not builders, we're not contractors, we're not roofers. We're not contractors. We're not roofers. Do we have any contingency to bring someone in, like the Gale folks who looked at the police station, to oversee this project?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Jordan Geist, Bon Public Schools, Director of Business Services. As part of the MSBA program, we're required to have an owner's project manager, which is assigned by the state, who will oversee and make sure everything is up to code and the specs are met for the drawings.
And is that person obviously qualified and has experience with construction?
So, the state vets all of the project managers for the accelerated repair program and the core building programs? So, they've gone through the vetting process? So, yes, qualified.
Thank you. Does that answer it? Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article Six? Come down.
Just quickly, Mark Terrell from Buzzards Bay. The last sentence of the motion got me thinking. If we don't get invited into the accelerated repair program, do we have a Plan B? The roof is leaking.
That's a great question. Ms. Mr. Angelo is going to take the podium back. Go ahead.
I'm Jordan.
Or Jordan, you're gonna defer?
I'm answering that.
Thank you. Great question. So, right now, the accelerated repair program is happening on a two-year cycle. So, we would reapply. We've also considered going at our own, but the cost savings through working with the MSBA is, as we said historically, between 47% and 49%. So, that's obviously the way we want to go first. The Board, the MSBA, is voting on, I think it's Halloween, October 31st. So, once we hear the results of that, then we'll start looking at the next option.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article Six? Thank you all for your questions. We can move to a vote on Article Six. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. You will have 30 seconds to vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board as passed with 214 votes in favor and 13 opposed. Okay, Article Seven is the next article, and it is on page 19 of your handbook. Article Seven also requires a two-thirds majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
We move the town appropriate the sum of $23,900,000 for the cost of planning, instructing, equipping, and furnishing a new office and garage maintenance building facility and ancillary space located at 201 Macaffa Boulevard, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, set funds to be expended under the direction of the ICEWAM, Integrated Solid Waste Management Building Committee, and to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Clause 1, or Section 8, Clause 14, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore and further, that while such bonds or notes shall be general obligation of the town, it is the intent of the town that such bonds or notes be paid in the first instance from the ICEWAM Integrated Solid Waste Management Enterprise Fund. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to support this article. This article is to fund the construction of a new office and maintenance garage at the Department of Integrated Solid Waste Management, better known as ICEWAM. The department recently went through an extensive permitting process resulting in the town's ability to develop and utilize the entire site footprint. This permitting expansion will extend the life of the landfill 15 to 20 years. To accommodate the new landfill expansion, existing infrastructure will need to be moved and rebuilt. The final boundaries of the operation have been established, allowing the staff to maximize landfill capacity and place permanent structures in areas that cannot be utilized for waste disposal. The office, garage, transfer stations, and the residential recycling center will need to be moved to make space for this landfill expansion. You may have noticed, if you've been to the Residential Recycling Center in the last year, there is an area to the south of the facility that has been cleared. This cleared area will be the new site of the office and garage, transfer station, and residential recycling center. The office, garage, and transfer station are proposed to begin construction in 2026 and be completed in the summer of 2027. The Residential Recycling Center will stay in its current location for a few more years before it's rebuilt on that property as well. For over the last two decades, the Integrated Solid Waste Management has utilized leased office trailers and a maintenance garage built in the early 1970s. As the operations have expanded and become more complex, these facilities have become inadequate to serve operational needs. The proposed office will provide the space needed for administrative functions, while the garage will provide updated safe and useful spacing equipment needed to support and maintain ongoing operations and provide much-needed storage. This building is proposed to have a useful life of 50 years, providing useful town infrastructure far past the life of the landfill. And as the Integrated Solid Waste Management is an enterprise fund, this project will be funded entirely through revenue generated from facilities' operations. A yes or I vote in favor of this motion would approve funds to move forward with development. A yes or I vote in favor of the motion would approve the ICEWAM capital borrowing project to build a new maintenance garage and office building. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the construction project will not be funded and will not move forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Tom Joyce.
The ICEWAM Committee, Building Committee, with Lane College Associates have completed design development and are on track for substantial design completion this year, with construction beginning next year. The ICEWAM facility is a town asset that fully funds and expenses associated with curbside collection of municipal solid waste and recyclables and provides further disposal options for town residents with an integrated residential recycling center. ICEWAM is a leader in developing and recycling programs in the state, and most importantly, it has a regional disposal option when only a few disposal sites remain in the state. Based on the past four-year average, ICEWAM generates an annual gross revenue of $18 million, with net annual return to unrestricted retained earnings of $5 million. The enterprise fund's total debt is approximately $2.6 million. Additionally, ICEWAM has fully funded closure account for landfill capping and closure costs. The total cost for the office and maintenance garage building is estimated to be $25.8 million. $1.9 million was appropriated at the 2024 May Town Special Meeting for architecture, engineering, and project management. The remainder of $23.9 million is being requested tonight. Development of the 12-acre apostle and relocation of infrastructure, beginning with the office and maintenance garage, will allow uninterrupted operation of the landfill and its revenue through the expansions onto the 25-acre apostle. The level of services that are provided to the residents of Bourne will not change, and all infrastructure is funded by the ICEWAM Enterprise Fund, not through a tax levy. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on Article Seven? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article Seven. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. You will have 30 seconds to vote using your handheld device. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board as passed with 207 votes in favor and 14 opposed. The last essential article, Article Eight, is on page 20 of your handbook. All right. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article Eight?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
Thank you. We move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,134,000 for the purposes of design and engineering for a new transfer station to be constructed. The Integrated Solid Waste Management Facility at 201 Macaffa Boulevard, including cost of securing an owner's project manager and designer to develop said designs and all other costs incidental or related, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $1,134,000 from Integrated Solid Waste Management retained earnings. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this article.
You have the floor, Mr. Meyer.
This article is to fund the architectural, engineering, and project management services for designing bidding phases of a multi-material transfer station at the Department of Integrated Solid Waste Management. The proposed transfer station is integral part of the development of the new 12-acre apostle to the south of the existing facility and will be designed to manage construction and demolition debris, municipal solid waste, and recyclables. It will replace the two existing transfer stations located on the 25-acre apostle and will allow for the proposed horizontal landfill expansion. Construction of this new transfer station will provide uninterrupted operations of the landfill expansion and the revenue associated with it. Once the landfill is closed 15, 20 years from now, the proposed multi-material transfer station will continue to manage and perpetuate many of the waste streams that this facility currently manages. The proposed transfer station is scheduled to go into construction phase in the middle of the next year, reaching completion in the middle of 2027. Instruction funding would be requested at the 2026 May Annual Town Meeting once a final design is complete. This article will be funded by the Enterprise Fund retained earnings and off through the tax levy. A yes or I vote in favor of this motion would approve funds to move forward with development of designs for a new transfer station at the ICEWAM property. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that additional design work would not be funded, and the project will not move forward at this time. Again, the Select Board voted 5-0-0 to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on Article Eight?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Tom Joyce.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Eight? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article Eight. This vote requires a majority vote. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board as passed with 209 votes in favor and 11 opposed. We will now move to the lottery system to determine the order of the seven remaining articles. Article 13 on page 29 of your handbook. Article 13 on page 29 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. There was also a supplement that I believe was included in the handbook with the recently submitted text of the motion. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
Madam Moderator, my name's Patrick Ross, 6 Benedict Road, Gray Gables, and I'm prepared to make the motion at the appropriate time.
All right, you may state. Does the Select Board have a motion to make on this article?
We do not, Madam Moderator.
Does the Finance Committee have any positive or any motion to make on this article?
No.
They do not, so you may go ahead and make the motion, Mr. Ross.
Sure. Move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation authorizing the issuance of a non-transferable annual all-alcohol package store license specific to Sea State Foods LLC. Patrick Ross, Manager, DBA Katamit Fish, and the Town of Bourne, on such further terms as the Select Board may authorize, as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before the enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
We have a motion and a second? The petitioner, you have the floor, if you would like to give your explanation? Come on. You're one of the co-petitioners? Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, hi, I'm Jenny Ross, 6 Benedict Road. With my husband, Patrick, we just spoke. We're the owners of Katamit Fish and Sea State Food, Sea State Foods on Route 28 in Katamit. And we're here tonight to ask your support of this article. This would allow our small family-owned business to receive a restricted-location-specific liquor license to sell specialty wine, beer, and spirits at our market. Back in early 2023, the Select Board approved a new license for our business, but unfortunately, that license has been tied up in appeals involving another entity, which has nothing to do with us, but it has significantly impacted our business. So, we're looking forward to providing a small curated selection of specialty wine, beer, and spirit sales after our approval, but we've been unable to do so as the approved license could not be issued. So, it's now been almost three years, and there's a real possibility that the delay could continue for months or even years to come as the approval process continues. So, this article would let the town ask the legislature for permission to issue a new restricted license that's specific to our business and to our address. It cannot be transferred, sold, or used anywhere else in town. There are no other licenses in our part of town, in the village of Katamit, and this would help our small business remain viable in the years ahead by diversifying our offering in our market and by providing financial stability in the off-season, that being a real breaker, make-or-break season for small businesses like ours. So, we're simply asking for the chance to operate as the town already approved us to do so, and this article gives us that opportunity. We'll hope you support it by voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have a recommendation to make on this article?
The Select Board voted 3-0-2 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this article?
The Finance Committee voted four opposed, one in favor, and one abstention.
Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 13?
Good evening again, Langdon Allen, 59 Elgin Road in Pecasset. I've been a customer of Katamit Fish for going on probably close to 40 years now. Most recently, when the owners, Pat and Jenny Ross, have owned it, they've maintained the fine quality. This is a small store. It's not going to become a major liquor store. It's a very small store dealing with fish and other specialty goods. Most of all, I think we in the town have a need to support small business. Those of us in the Katamit-Pecasset area have very little to call on for food. That's why we rely on Katamit Fish, Bogside Farm, other farms. Um, that's why we rely on Katomet Fish, Bogside Farm, other farms, um, in order to get our food. It's good quality food, it's made locally, produced locally. And again, we need these, uh, small businesses to stay around. Um, if a liquor license will help them even a little bit, I think it's worth it. Um, as Jenny said, there's no one else around, um, not that we're all in this need of buying liquor, but, um, in some cases it'll help them and will help consumers not having to drive 20 or 30 miles away. So again, I support it and hope that others will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard on our ICU? Come on down.
Hello, I'm Susan Siegel, 1276 County Road, Katomet. I'm the owner of the Bootstrap Farm Club. Um, we're a similarly small, small business in the food business, uh, just a short distance from Katomet Fish. We're a seasonal business now. We've been unable to stay open year-round. Um, our customers hate it when we close and love it when we come back. We love what's happening at Katomet Fish, we love what's happening in the area, we love feeding our local community. Food is tough. The costs are going up constantly. We all fight it. We want to give you clean, good, local food that's not toxic. Katomet Fish does a great job. This would help them stay open year-round and open in business, and we're here to support them.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to Article 13? Come on.
Hi, my name's Mike Benito, I just wanted to add my two cents, um, 40 Carlisle in, uh, Gray Gables. I just want to say, I do fundraising for, um, the hockey program I have in the past for years, and when I need to go knocking on doors and look for support, uh, for high school athletics, um, I also have a seven-year-old despite my age, uh, so I'll be knocking on this door for a long time, uh, but every time I do, uh, they've always helped me out as, uh, as have many of the other small local businesses in town. I'm not knocking on doors at the likes with all due respect of Starbucks and Market Basket, et cetera, et cetera. It's really the core of our community, uh, is these small businesses, so if this helps them, uh, stay around, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any, thank you all. Would anyone else like to be heard now on Article 13? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 13. This article requires a simple majority vote. You will have 30 seconds to vote using your handheld device, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the petitioner's motion has passed with 102 in favor and 40 opposed. Okay, thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Could you repeat that vote?
Can you repeat the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. 182 in favor and 40 opposed. Thank you. Sorry about that. The next article is Article 11. Article 11 on page 23 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article 11?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Gina Zarovitz.
We move the town vote to, A, authorize the Select Board to acquire the fee and/or any lesser real property interest, including but not limited to a permanent or temporary easement or easements in the parcel or parcels of land described later in this motion for the purposes of establishing, constructing, operating, and maintaining sidewalks and roadways for pedestrians as well as motorized and non-motorized transportation, and for all the other purposes for which public ways are now or hereafter may be used in the Commonwealth. Said purposes to include but not be limited to use for the construction, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of right-of-way sidewalks, drainage, utilities, driveways, slopes, grading, and landscaping, parking areas, and other appurtenances in our facilities. Said acquisition and uses to be used to enable the town to undertake the intersection improvement project at the intersection of Barlow's Landing Road and Shore Road, and for any and all purposes incidental or related thereto, and further that the parcel or parcels of land subject to this article are located at 369 Barlow's Landing Road, Bourne, and shown as permanent easement on a plan entitled Easement Plan Permanent Easements 369 Barlow's Landing Road, Bourne, Mass., dated September 24th, 2025, prepared by Scott Ludwig, professional land surveyor, registration number 48095 for Land Tech Consultants, Inc., and 375 Barlow's Landing Road, Bourne, and shown as permanent easement on a plan entitled Easement Plan Permanent Easements 375 Barlow's Landing Road, Bourne, Mass., dated September 4th, 2025, prepared by Scott Ludwig, professional land surveyor, registration number 48095 for Land Tech Consultants, Inc., a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. B, authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes. The Select Board voted unanimously 500 to recommend approval.
You have the floor, Mrs. Zarovitz.
Thanks. The Department of Public Works has finalized the plans and survey for the intersection improvements at Shore Road and Barlow's Landing Road. In order to install the compliant sidewalks with the geometry of the intersection, two permanent easements are needed to complete this work. 369 Barlow's Landing Road, 57 square feet, 375 Barlow's Landing Road, 302 square feet. And on a personal note, I live in Pecassett on Shore Road, and I drive my son Jacob, who's blind, back and forth to work at our office every day. I use this intersection multiple times a day if I have to, and I welcome these safety improvements to the village of Pecassett, and I encourage you to vote in favor of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 600 to recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Article 11?
Mark Terrell Buzzitsbay, and I'm actually rising to a point of order. I'd hate to see this, uh, get hung up, and so I say that it's all, long been my understanding that action to acquire or convey an interest in real estate needs to be accomplished by a two-thirds vote of the town meeting. Has something changed?
Ask town council to answer that question. Thank you.
The appropriation of funds requires a two-thirds vote. There's no appropriation of funds as part of this motion, and so we can acquire by simple majority. Essentially, it would be gifted under what's happening here.
Is that, okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything on Article 11? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article 11. This vote requires a simple majority. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 183 votes in favor and 11 opposed. Article 3. Article 3 on page 13 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize M. James Strangelo.
We move that the town appropriate the sum of $368,000 for the purposes of this article and to meet this appropriation to transfer the sum of $368,000 from new, from free cash.
You have the floor, Ms. Strangelo.
Thank you. Passage of this article allows $368,000 of ICEWham! host community fees generated last year in excess of the budgeted amount of $600,000 to be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund that was established at the 2007 Annual Town Meeting. Monies accumulated in the fund helped defray the cost of capital projects approved by the town. The balance in the Capital Stabilization Fund as of August 31st, 2025 was $1,724,309.25. Some of the projects the Capital Stabilization Fund have been used to help pay for were the DPW facility, the feasibility and design of the South Side Fire Station, the purchase of the land on Clay Pond Road for the South Side Fire Station, and it has been used to help pay capital expenditure debt service in the operating budget. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion provides funding to increase the Capital Stabilization Fund. This will help ensure that funds continue to be set aside for the long-term improvement of the town's capital assets. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would not provide additional funding for the Capital Stabilization Fund. The Select Board voted unanimously 500 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 500 to recommend approval.
Thank you. Would anyone like to be heard on Article 3? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 3. This is a simple majority vote. You will have 30 seconds to vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 189 votes in favor and four opposed. Article 10. Article 10 on page 22 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
We move as the town vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of $25,000 for tree removal at the Sagamore Cemetery in order to preserve fragile gravestones and to transfer $25,000 from historic preservation reserves.
You have the floor, Mr. Meyer.
This project is to remove approximately 29 trees which threatens to destroy fragile gravestones, slate, marble, et cetera, which are the primary source of the social, economic, political, medical, and family history of the town of Bourne. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the proposed project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, a no or nay vote opposed to the motion means the funding will not be provided and the project will not proceed. The Select Board voted unanimously 500 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Ms. Harcourt.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 600 to recommend this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this article? Come on down.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Elizabeth, AKA Beth Ellis. I've been a director and officer of the Sagamore Cemetery Association for decades. Tonight I am here representing this organization as the applicant seeking Community Preservation Act funds to remove 29 trees, many huge and rotted, that threaten to damage or crush in excess of 100 historic marble granite or slate gravestones when they fall during any extreme weather event such as a nor'easter, a hurricane, or a blizzard. Why should we care and want to preserve these gravestones that mark the burial sites of people, some of whom were born pre-1900, and many more who lived and died before Bourne even became incorporated as a town in 1884? Often, in just a few words, they give succeeding generations a summary of the economic, religious, medical, political, and social customs of a bygone era in Sagamore and indeed our country. Words such as "lost at sea" imply that sailors drowned in pursuit of earning a living in a trade that offered more than, um, worldwide, that offered worldwide adventure. It was dangerous. Facts carved in stone with identical death dates of mothers and infants imply indisputably that they both died during childbirth before the dawn of medical advancement. Approximately 17 members of our town's founding namesake Bourne family rest in peace at this island of tranquility, open to the public for research, strolling, and genealogical pursuits in a village that has no park. I respectfully urge you, my fellow Bourne voters, to help our volunteer board of directors preserve this treasure trove of a significant portion of Sagamore and Bourne's history by voting yes on this article. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 10. This vote requires a simple majority. You have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 183 votes in favor and seven opposed. Article 9. Article 9 on page 21 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Ann Marie Sarunian.
We move that the town vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of $710,000 for design, engineering, and permitting services to upgrade the Monument Beach Marina, including all other costs related or incidental thereto, and to transfer $710,000 from open space and recreation reserves.
Ms. Sarunian, you have the floor.
The Select Board voted unanimously 500 to recommend approval of this article. This, um, article is the beginning stages of eventually replacing, identifying costs to replace the Monument Beach Marina, which is approximately, we guess, 75-plus years old. Um, it was built in the early 50s. There was at some point in time, if you recall, the 2006 storm where, um, there was some damage done to the Marina, and monies was spent to repair it. Last year, um, there was money set aside, $30,000 voted for the wave attenuator, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. That money was turned back to the town simply because we would be sinking money into something that, um, needs is in- that needs, is in dire need of repair. So this would cover the cost of the design, the engineering, and permitting for the Monument Beach Marina. And it's coming out of the Open Space and Recreation Reserve Fund.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The finance committee voted unanimously six-zero-zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Would anyone like to be heard on Article Nine? Mr. York, I see you.
Yes, I'm John York. I live in the village of Katamet. I use the waterways of this town quite a bit, including the Monument Beach Marina. It's an important facility. Its location is, is prime for various activities, both town activities and public recreation. I'm concerned about the access to this facility. So we're investing quite a bit, and I think we should invest, and I urge people to vote in favor of this article. For several different reasons, the, this monument, this marina has very poor both vehicle and pedestrian and bicycle access, and very poor handicap access. This town meeting, I don't have the exact session of town meeting, but I believe it was in two thousand and ten, appropriated eighty-eight thousand dollars for the purpose of, quote, "safe pedestrian access to Monument Beach." At the site where that is, was voted, there is no currently pedestrian access. Eighty-eight thousand dollars was spent for vehicular access at that point. I've raised this issue before. That was, I believe that was inappropriate use of town meeting funds. The town has never responded to me on whether those funds were used appropriately or not. And I believe that that access should be provided, and if we're going to spend this much money on this marina, we should make sure that we make good on the, on the eighty-eight thousand dollars the town meeting appropriated more than fifteen years ago, approximately fifteen years ago, for the purpose of safe pedestrian access. I'm referring to the pedestrian railroad crossing, which has had repeated problems with the, with the railroad putting up no trespassing signs there. It's currently locked, and our town has spent money on pedestrian, on handicap access to the beach for different mats and such, but has never made good on that vote, and I urge the town to make good on that vote, even if it takes part of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Would anyone else? Yes, I see you, Ms. Bambachi.
Just a question, Leona from Pocasset. We pay beach sticker fees and mooring fees. Where does all that money, where does that money go to? That we pay for those services in the town, and I would think that that would-
Are you asking if that's funding this article?
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm asking in general, but is that money help to fund marinas? I mean, that's what the money's for.
Specifically to this article, we can ask.
It's, it's a marina fund. They're looking for money for the Monument Beach Marina.
Correct.
... and Harbor Master. So the mooring funds that the town charges, those do go back into a waterways improvement fund. So it does help to offset a lot of the costs for projects such as this. That fund also helps to take care of dredging projects and anything else that is determined that needs to be taken care of.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article?
Madam Moderator.
Go ahead, Ms. Sarunian.
I just want to make an additional point, if you didn't read the language, that this marina does generate a revenue, and on an average of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars per year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Hearing and seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article Nine. This vote requires a simple majority. You will have thirty seconds to vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board is passed with one hundred and eighty-three votes in favor and nine opposed. We are down to the last two. Article one is on page eleven of your handbook, and it requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Sarunian.
We move that the town vote to hear reports and recommendations of committees, town, and state officers.
You have the floor, Ms. Sarunian.
The select board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do.
I recognize Tom Joy.
The finance committee voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any, is there any discussion on Article One? Okay. Hearing none, this vote requires a simple majority. We can move to the voting now. You will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with one hundred and fifty-two votes in favor and twenty-four opposed. We will now hear the reports of the town boards and committees who wish to be heard tonight. Okay. Are there any committee chairs that would, or committee chairs that would like to be heard tonight? Last chance. All right, we're going to move on to the last article. Article twelve. Article twelve on page twenty-five of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive recommendation on Article twelve? I'm sorry. Go to the planning board first. I know. Does the planning board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize John Dugan.
The planning board moves the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant with the following amendments to correct three Scrivner's errors in the warrant and conform this motion and the amended bylaw text to that publicly heard and recommended by the planning board.
All right, we have a second. Okay, you have the floor.
The planning board report on the multifamily housing section three A in the downtown district. In January of two thousand and twenty-one, the Massachusetts Legislature adopted an economic development bond bill which made changes to the state's zoning act. The law added a new section, section three A, to the zoning act of chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Law, which requires MBTA communities to have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. The MBTA communities law creates zoning that encourages new missing middle housing in areas served by public transit. Housing created under this law provides opportunities for people to live, work, and thrive in walkable neighborhoods closer to transit. Bourne is one of one hundred and seventy-seven communities that are required under the MBTA zoning law to create zoning for multifamily housing. Bourne's multifamily district is required to have the following characteristics: a minimum multifamily capacity of five hundred and fifty-seven homes, a minimum gross density of fifteen homes per acre. The homes must be suitable for families with children. At least half of a compliant zoning district must be contiguous lots of land. All non-contiguous portions of the district must be at least five acres in size. The planning board selected the downtown district of Buzzards Bay to create a multifamily overlay district, an MFOD, M-F-O-D. Compliance modeling resulted in two overlay districts. Multifamily overlay district, district area one, is located on the western side of the downtown district within the core sub-district between Main Street and the bypass Route Six. It is comprised of ten point eight acres. The following, I'm sorry, MFOD District Two, Area Two, is located on the eastern side of the downtown district within the core and gateway sub-districts between Main Street and the bypass Route Six. It is comprised of ten point eight acres. I'm sorry, Area One is comprised of thirty-four point four acres. The following is a summary of the proposed zoning amendments. Multifamily housing with three or more units and two-family dwellings would be permitted as of right rather than special permit. Site plan review is required. Parking requirements for multifamily dwellings is reduced from one point five spaces per home to one space per home. The model unit capacity and the overall density meet MBTA communities guidelines. The proposed district meets the contingency requirement because seventy-six percent of the total district area is contiguous. The planning board held informal public discussions on the proposed overlay district three times in two thousand and twenty-three, four times in two thousand and twenty-four, and seven times in two thousand and twenty-five. On September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five, the planning board opened a public hearing to review the proposed Bourne zoning bylaw amendment to add a multifamily overlay district, at which time the planning board endorsed the proposed multifamily overlay district, overlay district, and the multifamily overlay district map dated August, two thousand and twenty-five. The following six planning board members were present: John Duggan, Liz Brown, Catherine Walton, Daniel Doucette, David O'Connor, and Amanda Billado. The planning board voted unanimously six-zero to recommend approval of this article. A legal notice was published in the Cape Cod Times on August twenty-ninth and September fifth, respectfully submitted by the Bourne Planning Board.
Thank you. Does the select board have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, the select board voted five-zero-zero to recommend this article.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The finance committee encourages your support of this article. While there is no direct cost associated with its approval, failure to pass the article may result in significant financial risks to the town. Other municipalities have attempted to challenge similar zoning proposals and have been unsuccessful in court. The state has indicated that if this zoning is not adopted, the town could face fines or other penalties. In addition, non-compliance may jeopardize our eligibility for state grant funding and could negatively impact other revenue streams that we currently receive from the Commonwealth. The finance committee voted five in favor, none opposed, with one abstention to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Would anyone like to be heard on Article twelve? Yes, Mr. Seaver.
George Seaver, Katamet. This, I believe, is based upon the need for affordable housing statewide and on the Cape, and I offer the following data for the use of the awareness of the town officials. Because of the change in immigration policy, the need for affordable housing locally and otherwise has drawn, has declined dramatically. I drive every day, I pass two motels that a year ago were overflowing and now are empty, one of which is for sale, and I think we'll see that continue. The second thing that bothers me about this is that the dense housing such as this will greatly increase the nitrate septic, which is also an issue before the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Go ahead.
Good evening. Scott Fitzmeese from Pocasset, and thank you for staying this whole night and for doing whatever you had to do to be here. I just, I love when the town of Bourne is, is forward-thinking in our initiatives when we come together as a community, and we definitely need to be thinking about housing in a way that's really going to be, make it easier for that process, and this would certainly do that. I think that we need to think about our legacy as a town, and obviously, this zoning would also affect the possibility for future MBTA to be considered. I think it's important that we realize that about half the people who work on Cape actually commute from off Cape now. Many of those people don't have vehicles to get here. We also have bridge construction down the road to consider, and, I should have brought my glasses, and, let's see, I think rail is often a forgotten commodity, but as far as the zoning, it really is being forward-thinking and being aware of how important it is for us to see Buzzards Bay that's worked so hard for forty years, to really be on the map, have that sort of, one of these last pieces it really needs, I think, to, to be more destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Aliva.
Hi, Maria Aliva from Sagamore Beach. I'm speaking in favor of this article today. The MBTA proposal was adopted by former Governor Baker to allow multifamily dwellings in areas that are in the MBTA. This would give the owners of local businesses and single-family homes the option to build duplexes, townhouses, and small apartment buildings on their property. Many residents are struggling to find reasonably priced homes, and local businesses are struggling to attract employees and customers who simply cannot afford to live here. Anyone who has tried to buy or rent a home in Bourne recently knows that we have a huge shortage of reasonably priced homes. As the president and CEO of the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber of Commerce, I hear regularly from businesses and their employees that they are not able to find housing in Bourne. This drives away locals who often cannot afford to return to the community where they grew up. It also harms local businesses that rely on talented people to stay and build their careers on Cape Cod and the South Coast. To build a thriving business district in downtown Buzzards Bay that the town has been striving towards for years, we need to bring more people within walking distance of shops and restaurants. Research shows that walkability has a significant impact on sales revenue. Bringing in more people within walking distance of our downtown will build more vibrant shops and residence for everyone to enjoy. Finally, allowing smaller, more compact homes will allow more Bourne residents to age in the town that they love. Many Bourne residents who have lived here their entire lives are looking to downsize from their single-family homes. They often find that there are vanishing few options to move into smaller condos and apartments. We must work to create more housing options for our seniors so they aren't forced to move away when they need to downsize. I encourage other residents to join me in voting yes for multifamily housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aliva. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article twelve? Yes, Ms. Bombachi, go ahead.
Leona from Pocasset. I have no issue about housing. I think it's a great plan to have more housing for our community. My question then is, what's the plan for the wastewater? And will our wastewater treatment plan, if it's being hooked up to that, going to be able to manage such a development? Or what is the plan for the wastewater? Somebody mentioned it earlier about nitrates. We have to balance this whole thing with nitrates and development.
Thank you. Are you able to answer that, or is that a comment?
Yes, I think so. So this article creates the underlying zoning only for multifamily housing in the Buzzards Bay District, which this date in two thousand and eight, town meeting approved the downtown district zoning change, which since then has allowed twelve units per acre. This zoning would increase that by three.
This zoning would increase that by three. There is sewerage in Buzzards Bay, but it is up to the developer who may choose to build, whether that's a homeowner looking to do a duplex or a three-family, to be responsible for figuring out their wastewater and water supply. And it is not the responsibility of the town to increase the sewerage or anything else. So it would be incumbent on the developer to either, and they do have the ability to contribute to expansion of the sewer system if they would like to, and the same for water. So this is only to create the underlying zoning. Zoning for 12 units per acre has been in our zoning for this area for the last, I guess, 13 years. And the wastewater be treated on an as-project basis, just like any other development.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, you're next. And you, Ms. McCray. Mr. Duggan?
Tom Barnes, Greg Ables. I have no problem with this, these kinds of, this kind of building and this kind of a community, but it would be great in Attleboro or Bridgewater or Taunton or somewhere, but not on Cape Cod. And I think that this is probably the worst article that I've ever heard in all the town meetings I've ever been to, because it's absolutely going to destroy Buzzards Bay as we know it. And if you want to drive through, if you want to, it says here, changing the number of floors to four, and it says a minimum of three dwellings in each building. So you're not talking about duplexes. You're talking about multifamily, multi-level buildings all bunched together within a very small area, more dense population than any, probably any other place on the Cape, it sounds like. And we're not, if you vote for this, you're voting to change the culture and the community and completely change the Cape. Not to mention, in a year or two, we're all going to be talking about either a sewer system throughout Bourne to handle the runoff from all the houses that we already have, or everybody's going to have to put in for a $30,000 or $50,000 upgraded septic system. So if that's what you want, vote for it, but I think this will destroy Buzzards Bay and make it look a lot more like New Bedford or Fall River than Cape Cod. And it's going to completely change the character of Cape Cod. And at some point, we have to look at what we're fighting in terms of pollution of Buzzards Bay and say, you know, it's time to stop. We don't need economic development in this area. We don't need more homes. We need to figure out some way to save the environment so that it's a decent place to live, a decent place to boat or fish, or all the things, all the reasons why we live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. McCray.
Carrie McCray, Buzzards Bay. I just want to say, right after the beginning, it looks like across the board, our leaders here in the town have decided to not put up a fight against this. It sounds like, you know, we're hearing about it in other towns where the communities are kind of pushing back, and it looks like we're being told, this is what you're going to do, or you're going to be threatened with, we're going to pull money. And is that kind of what I'm hearing, that we're just going to roll over at this point? I mean, we've heard across the whole, across the whole country, no kings, no kings, and we have, you know, Maura Healey, who really is trying to, you know, force us to do things that aren't the best for our community. And it's not going to, you know, I've talked to quite a few people about the cost of living here on Cape Cod. And bringing more housing here is not going to solve the problem if the people that are working here can't afford to pay for it. And this situation is not going to give us more affordable housing for the people that work on the Cape and have to travel the bridges. It's still going to be too expensive for those people. They're going to continue to go over the bridge. I mean, this is not going to solve the problem. It's just going to open up another can of worms that we're going to have a hard time getting out of.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCray. I see folks, do you want to be heard, Ms. Legacey? And then, I'm so sorry, I see, are you next? Okay. Thank you. Were you down here first? Come on. I think you were.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Stokem from Buzzards Bay. There's a lot to unpack here, and I'll speak as a parent of three kids who can't afford to come back and live here right now. That's the problem. Cost is a product of supply and demand, and we don't have enough supply. We are laying the groundwork with this change to create a zoning situation that essentially enables developers to come in when, right now, they won't touch it because the conditions aren't even right. That's not the kind of business development that we're looking for. That's not the kind of growth we're looking for. What we're looking for is a zone that's designed for exactly this. That's what we need. I'm in favor of this because it's going to increase supply. It's going to increase supply right where it's needed most, right in the heart of the town, an area that a lot of folks in here would recognize as, in varying degrees, fallow for many years and not fully utilized to its greatest potential. That's what we're after right now, and that's what this change will do. The pollution problem in Buzzards Bay is due to just bad management and rules and science we didn't even know about years ago. We are smart now. We know how to manage property. We know how to build things correctly. That's what we need to be focused on and thinking of. This is the kind of growth and development that the town needs. This is the kind of stuff that my kids and my grandkids and the kids and grandkids of many in here need, because anybody who's tried to cross that bridge recently knows that it's a traffic jam every day of the week because people can't afford to even live here. So we have to import help from everywhere else. That's a crying shame. We can do something about that to set it in the right direction now, and I would recommend you vote for this. Thanks.
Thank you. I see a few more folks that would like to be heard on this article. You're next. Please, first. Will you wait, Ms. Legacey? Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Sue Barlow from Buzzards Bay. And I'm really concerned about this proposal. I live there. I go over the bridge many times a day. I try to drive around downtown and attend our restaurants and what shops there are. But you're trying to put all this housing in to help housing for Cape Cod, but it's on the wrong side of the bridge. I mean, we can't get over the bridge now. You just, it's miserable. And you can't even go down Main Street in Buzzards Bay. You can't turn left out of St. Margaret's anymore because the traffic is so bad. So I just feel like, you know, trying to put the whole burden of supplying workforce housing for Bourne and all of Cape Cod on Buzzards Bay seems pretty unfair. It's just going to completely and radically change Bourne, your downtown, and it's going to make it pretty miserable for everybody, I think, that lives there. That's just my concern about this and the commuter train. Like somebody else said, I don't understand why we keep trying to get more and more people onto Cape Cod. I think we should try to preserve Cape Cod the way it is. And trying to turn it into, I'm from Brockton, so I know what too much triple-decker, double-decker housing can do to a city. It just made, it destroyed Brockton. Brockton was a leading city, first electric lights, had tremendous transportation, but then all those double-deckers and triple-decker homes were built, and it pretty much destroyed Brockton. So I'm a little concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Legacey.
Hi. Thank you for waiting. Kathleen Legacey, 53, Howlett Ave, Monument Beach. You know, our wastewater treatment facilities are already taxed. Downtown is already taxed. It's a dense housing area, lots of houses and businesses in a very small space. Traffic is a nightmare at almost every time of the year now, not just in the summertime, when it's absolutely horrendous. But my concern is not, not with having a multifamily overlay district. My concern is that I am not hearing anything about regulating the size of the buildings that can be going in, the number of units that can be going in. Is it going to be two-family dwellings, three-family, four-family, 16, 25, 30 units? I'd like to, I'd like to know that there's some regulation before the face of our community is changed any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who's down here? No one's down there. There's Mr. Fitzmore.
Oh, sorry. Wait. Sorry. I didn't see you behind me.
I was going to let Mr. Sampson go, and then you, Mr. Fitzmore, because we already heard you.
Town meeting members, so I sit on two committees, Finance Committee and the Capitol House Committee. It's very important that we understand that there will be a direct impact on the town if we don't approve this. This is not something that the town is seeking or sought out on their own to do. They're doing it because it's required by state law. It has been contested and brought up in numerous communities. It has failed, the appeal of the towns has failed in every single community. The courts have ruled that the state can withhold funds. Now, this is a real bottom-line issue for everything that we do in this community. We're not just talking about MBTA funds. They can attach or deny us all of our reimbursements for the fire department, for the schools, for the roof, for the buildings. They can deny us all funding on this. The planning board and town officials have very wisely and very strategically picked an area of town as an overlay district, not something that any builder out there is going to come in with a plan right away to do a lot of development. This area is already fully developed. A builder would have to come in and pay outrageous market prices before they could even develop a plan. They'd have to buy everybody out, otherwise they wouldn't be able to do any major plan. And I know that Mr. Duggan has put a lot of work into this in the committee. This is the best, one of the best areas that we could pick that will have the least impact on us in the future, but still allows some of our current residents to make some alterations if they want. So please, please consider that, because if we don't do it, we will be back here at the annual town meeting once the state denies us funding, and we're going to be saying, how are we going to pay for the schools? How are we going to pay for the fire station? How are we going to pay all these other bills? And then, and then we have a different decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzmore.
I just want to thank Ms. McCray and Ms. Legacey for their comments, even though we're in different positions on the issue. I want to talk just really quickly about how important it is to look at innovative ways for us to make sure that we have attainably priced housing. I speak out on housing a lot, and we all talk about affordable housing, but we don't talk about attainable when it's in a certain price range, when you give a developer a $100,000 incentive to create housing that allows people to purchase a dwelling that will, they'll take an existing house that's there, and you give them $100,000, and you say, let's turn this from a one, single-family, we're going to let you make it into a four-family, but you've got to put an attainability cap on it. So people are coming in at maybe 210 for a unit, but it's capped, so it can only go 1% a year. Some of this creative stuff is, is things, are things that we can get involved as a community to make sure that it has the right green space around it, to make sure that we're doing things that are really going to allow people to get in a unit that they can afford to pay for. But one of the biggest issues here is that we really, really need the T to decrease the number of people that are driving here and backed up at the bridge for, in the morning and stuff, at all different times. So I would really encourage people to vote for this. I think that it's not all the solutions that were in this, but if we work together, many different people in the community, we could really make a good effect on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this article? Go ahead.
My name's Robin Bergfor, I live in Monument Beach, and I'm in favor of walkable communities. But my main question is how we maintain balance. My concern is that we're going to end up with more just residential and not a balance of residential, commercial, retail, office if we just have these very large multifamily overlay districts. It looks like the commercial zoning area is shrinking and shrinking. So my question is, will the multifamily overlay district allow mixed-use development?
I'm going to have the planning board representative answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it does. And still, along Main Street, it would be commercial, first floor is the zoning and would remain that zoning. So the parcels that are chosen in the districts would represent residential. As one of the other speakers talked about, it's really not economically feasible to come in and buy up existing single-family homes, to tear them down to build these huge residential complexes. This zoning allows from a two-family, which has not been allowed in town for quite some time, up to and including 15 units per acre. That would be the maximum. But there aren't any parcels in this district that are sitting vacant, ready, you know, an acre of land to be developed into one of those 15 units. So just like it's been 12 units per acre for 13 years, and we haven't seen any of that, the 15 units per acre is in sort of non-substantial change to the volume allowed, but still, it is the market that's at work that won't really allow a lot of that development. We just have to create the underlying zoning to be in compliance with the state law. So there's still commercial throughout the downtown area, and as you might see in other communities like Plymouth, they started to develop more residential for this middle-price point behind Main Street, and it added an awful lot of vibrance to the Main Street for the businesses, restaurants, shops, and so forth.
So my question is, will the Area 1 and Area 2 exclude commercial development?
Not if it's currently zoned.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 12? I see you. Come on down.
Regardless of where you stand on this issue, to me, it's discouraging and distressing to hear that from the leaders in the State House that we will conform or will be punished. That's very discouraging, and it's discouraging to hear from our leaders in our town that they are going to bow to that pressure from the state. I wish that we could debate it as a town and not have that pressure on us from the state. You know, it doesn't seem right to me.
Thank you. I see you, Mr. York.
There we go. John York, resident of Katamet. Although I'm generally opposed to increasing the population of the town for, in purpose of increasing the population, because I believe as a strictly on a mathematics and engineering basis, that the cost per resident is greater when the density is greater. But I will leave that to other people to argue about. In this case, I'm in favor of this. But with a caveat. The concept of walkable communities is something I think our town is struggling to embrace. I think they have attempted to embrace it. The best example I can see of our town's initiative is the Crosswalk Improvements at Academy Drive, where our town very wisely decided to go on their own and spend town funds for that improvement so we could get where we really wanted, and it's a great improvement, very effective and cost-effective. But in others... But in others places, our town is struggling to support walkable communities. I gave you the example of the supposed pedestrian access in Monument Beach that doesn't exist, even though we appropriated money for it and the money was spent for other purposes. There is a much bigger elephant in the room, which is the Bridges Project. And most people are in favor of new bridges because there's lots of issues and problems with the old bridges. But the project, when you look at terms of the footprint of the project, it's primarily a land project to rebuild most of the major roadways in our town. And our town has had, to my point of view, our town officials are working very hard to keep up with this project. It's a huge project. The budget of this project would fund our town for 60 years, and it will have that impact on our town, the same impact our entire town budget of 60 years has on quality of life in our town. And for example, there's a major public comment period closing at the end of this week, and our town is not going to submit comments. The Select Board is not going to submit comments on a $5 billion project in our town, and I think that's a shame. But beyond that, the comments they should be submitting have to do with looking at the details and realizing that this project, being pushed on us by the state, as Don DuBurg just referred to with this development we're talking about, is significantly shortchanging pedestrian and bicycle requirements that they claim they are meeting, but when you look in the details, they aren't. And for example, if our town held them to task to provide pedestrian and bicycle facilities they should be providing, it's about $40 million worth of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure that this project is supposed to provide, that they are not going to provide, and our town is not going to raise it as an issue. So when we talk about building livable, walkable communities, we need to not just talk the talk, but we need to walk the walk. And this project...
That's your, that's three and a half minutes.
May I have another 20 seconds?
I'll allow it.
Thank you. This project and the bill from the state that created it, supposed to create walkable communities, there's grant money available if you have this zone in place. But the town actually has to apply for the grant and put it to good use. And I think that that's essential, and I could quote, but I don't have any 20 seconds. Other grant money our town has passed up for sidewalks, and we need, we need to go forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 12 tonight? Right? All right.
Yeah, I just want to say, Sue Barlow, again, from Buzzards Bay, and I just don't really understand how this part, area was selected. Once again, wrong side of the bridge. You keep wanting to stop all this traffic at the bridge, you're just increasing traffic at the bridge. You put all these people in there who want to work on Cape Cod, right where they have to go over the bridge. I thought there was going to be some investigation about how workforce housing on joint-based Cape Cod, they have a lot of land. And I also thought, I saw that the Bayview Campground is closing right off of MacArthur Boulevard on the Cape side of the bridge. I mean, maybe that would be a great place. It's like 46 acres of campground. Doesn't seem like it would be too hard to tear that down. So anyway, I'm just want to reiterate, it's, it's going to be a tremendous, we're already so tight in Buzzards Bay, and we already have a lot of buildings going up. We have Canal Crossing being built. We just had the 55-plus apartments being built. The place on, what is that, Bay Motor View, that's going to be going up this fall with multi-units. And also, next to Liberty, the liquor store there, the Liquor Barn, that's been cleared and is going to be multifamily units. We already have a lot of multifamily units in Buzzards Bay, and I'm just telling you that traffic is already a nightmare, and I just don't see how this is going to improve the bridge problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pete Fisher, and I'm from Bourne. It's a sad day for the town of Bourne, when we are being told, mandated, to run our town and to make our town look the way somebody in Boston wants us to look. We've lost control. We lost control 10 years ago when we joined the MBTA. That was our biggest mistake. We were promised in two years we'd have service. We were told we would not pay until we had service. Eight years later, the train is still not on time. It's not showing up. They put us on our knees. Our Finance Committee has said, we're doing this because we have to. What we have to do is, we have to get out of the MBTA so they will not dictate to the town of Bourne how we operate our town. We have a planning board that can give us proper plans without being told how to do it. So I think we need to somehow get out of this mess we're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Hi, Judy Froman from Sagamore Beach. So when I first came to Bourne, I thought, okay, Buzzards Bay, it's a great opportunity. And there are wonderful possibilities. It's kind of a blank slate in some ways, and it has to be purposeful. I think, you know, just to say, okay, there's a zoning, you know, we're putting in the special zoning, that's only one tiny, tiny step in something that needs to happen. It is possible to have a very walkable, commutable plan, working very closely with participating and offering our feedback to the planning board when things do come forward, and having the planning board listen to us. I think that the emphasis on going over the bridge is kind of wrong. What really is happening is that this is something that is supposed to allow the trains to come to Buzzards Bay and go, oh, like, take your train over, over the canal. But also, people can commute back, you know, backed up towards the city. And so that, those are some, those are some of the things. I spent the last weekend in a, in an area that is a very densely populated, very walkable, very commutable area. And yes, it was established, it was old, but it's been renovated and it's been built up and made beautiful. And I think that if we're, we're purposeful with this, and we also get the benefit of grant money that comes back to the town, and monies that are, that can afford the town with more opportunities, why are we going to look a gift horse in the mouth? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 12? I have, I hear Mr. Meyer has said he would like to move the question. Second. Debatable? No. It's not debatable, so we are going to move to a vote on Article 12. This is a simple majority vote. We're voting on the motion to move the question. He's fixing it on the devices. If nobody wants to be heard, then we can just move forward to voting without moving the question. We had a motion and a second, and we're going to go ahead and just vote on Mr. Meyer's motion so that we don't have any further confusion. Okay. So this is a simple majority vote to end debate on Article 12 and move to a vote. All those in favor, please use the green button to say yes. If you would like to debate further, you may say no. You may begin voting. Okay, voting is now closed. Peter Meyer's motion has passed with 161 in favor and 22 opposed, so we will now move to a vote on Article 12. Okay? So this vote requires a simple majority. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 69 in favor and 47 opposed. Okay, everyone, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. That was the last article for this special town meeting. At this time, I would entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. I have a motion and a second. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor of dissolving this town meeting, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, I declare it was unanimous. Have a great evening.